Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of May 18th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. And at this time, it's a pleasure to have Rabbi Schlinger from the Habad of Bakersfield to offer our invocation. Rabbi has been so active in our community, just really supporting our community. It's always a pleasure to work with the congregation there. And then, following the invocation, Noemi Garcia, who's a sophomore at Golden Valley High, will lead us in the pledge. She's Award One Commissioner, a member of the Golden Valley High School Student Council, on the tennis team, and a member of Leaders in Life. Rabbi, would you all please stand?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. With your permission, first, I would just like to make a personal thank you on behalf of our community, the Jewish community and beyond. Over the last year and a half, we have been working on building the Central Valley's first Holocaust memorial to be made up of six million buttons. You have been, Honorable Mayor, you have been an absolute God-sent in your support for the project, and so have all the members of your office and the supervisors, and we're forever grateful and hoping that it will come to reality this coming school year. I would like to just offer a Jewish prayer that is said on the Jewish Sabbath. It's a communal prayer, and I think it's relevant to us here. Here's how it goes. Personalize it a little bit, okay? "May he who blessed our fathers and mothers, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, Sarah, Rebecca, Rachel, and Leah, may they bless this entire community and all of the communities around us, the entire city of Bakersfield, and all its residents, them, their families, their children, their grandchildren, and beyond. For all those who occupy themselves faithfully with communal affairs, we wish that the Holy One bless be he. Bless them in all, bless you in all your success, in all your endeavors. Remove any sickness from body or soul. Send blessing and success to all the work of your hands. Together, let us say, amen."
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you, Noemi. That's Councilmember Eric Arias's pick for the Youth Commission, so glad to have you here. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Public statements. I apologize, Major, Mayor. Presentations item 4A.
Madam Clerk, would you like to read that? Coming up, little technology challenge. Okay, we'll get around that by having Paul Saldana, Richard Chapman, and Nick Ortiz come up. "It's my honor to be able to present a proclamation, whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy, whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural, urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, university, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas economic developers in the City of Bakersfield and County of Kern work daily to advance these principles and strategies, and I'm going to add, and all of our community partners. Now, therefore, I, Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 16th through 22nd, 2022, as Economic Development Week in our city, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better." It's my pleasure to present this to the team, and I'm going to present it to our Director of Economic and Community Development, Paul Saldana. Come on up here, and you can introduce our other guests.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I have with me Nick Ortiz representing the B3K, which is our Regional Economic Development Prosperity Initiative, and Richard Chapman, who's the President and CEO of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. I just want to say that, you know, for us, economic development really is a noble calling because we really believe in the work that we do, because it makes a positive difference in the community and it changes lives of those that we serve. We champion this effort through doing a few things. We do good work. We listen, engage, and adapt. We communicate, and we build and enlist allies. And that's what you see here this evening, is really a representation of that collaboration that we have here in Kern County. I also want to recognize our economic and community development staff that are here, and I'd ask for them to stand up, those that were able to make it this evening. These professional individuals that help do a lot of the work that you see accomplished through the organization. So with that, thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ortiz.
I'd just briefly say that I just appreciate the investment that the council has made in economic development in our community. I think it's incredibly important, not just the work that we're doing at B3K, but also the re-establishment of the Economic Development Department within the city. And I think that the city is doing so many things to really try to drive forward that business growth that we are all looking for. And at the forefront of that is defending what we have, and through the city's legislative advocacy, through the mayor's legislative advocacy, we're doing that. And then, the future of what Richard, and Paul, and I have to think about is really, how do we bring in those industries and businesses that are going to provide your constituents with great-paying jobs? And that's the bottom line of what we want to do. But thank you very much, not only for this proclamation, but also for your continued investment in the work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I echo what Nick said about commitment and support of economic development in the region, city, as well as the region. And it really is about the public-private partnership, right? And all of you, and all of us here today, your departments, the city managers, council members, mayors, we're all economic developers, right? We're ambassadors for growth, good jobs, and both local job growth, as well as new companies coming in, and entrepreneurship. Those are the three legs of the stool. So we're excited. We're on the cusp, I think, of really positive things coming out of COVID. I know our organizations are actually flourishing in terms of projects, incoming projects. Actually, it's gone up 50% over the last two years. People want to come to Bakersfield and Kern, and we make that commitment. You all have, actually, when projects come in front of your city council, they have a degree of certainty, reliability, and clarity about that process. So kudos to you. Really, that red carpet is actually in place in your community. And hot off the press, we have the new Kern County Market Overview and Member Directory. And we're excited to release that. There's a digital version. Send it to all your friends, and tell the story of Bakersfield and Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Take a photo.
Let me put that.
Thank you so much. Proclamation to Greg Strakalos, Director of the City of Bakersfield Public Works Department, declaring National Public Works Week in Bakersfield during the week of May 15th.
You're bringing your whole team down here. Bring whoever you want down here, because you can't do it alone, can you? Imagine a city with no roads, nothing to drive on, no place to live, no running water. Well, this team helps make sure that we have a place to live and that our city runs smoothly. And we really appreciate all their help with designing, constructing, renovating, operating public projects, maintaining traffic control systems, maintaining street surfaces, and maintaining our sewer systems. So thank you so much, Director Strakalos, and our entire Public Works Department. So it is my honor today to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Bakersfield. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, can you hear, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. And whereas it is in the best public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Bakersfield to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective neighborhoods. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, and now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in our city, and urge all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services to our citizens, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, to our safety, comfort, and quality of life. It's my pleasure to present this to you, Director. Thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
And then, we're going to choose one of you to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Go.
Just wanted you to be nervous.
City Council, on behalf of the 470 men and women who make up the Public Works Department, we thank you for the recognition. I think the proclamation did a very good job defining what Public Works does, and I think if you asked anybody behind me or in the public works industry why they chose a career in public works, it's because they have a chance to make a tremendous impact and affect a lot of people in a positive way. This year's theme is Ready and Resilient. And the way your public's team, Public Works team, is ready, all 470 people who work for Public Works know that they are essential employees, and God forbid any disaster or any emergency occur, all 470 people are there to stand by. But not just that, we have several men and women who are on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ready to respond to any crashes, accidents, or infrastructure failures. So we're ready in that way. Resilient, of course, we're designing our projects and building our projects to be much more resilient to hotter temperatures, to more intense storm events. But we're also resilient in terms of things that we're doing with the Clean Cities Program, with the repairs to some of the vandalism we see out there. So we are a steadfast, resilient community. And again, on behalf of all 470 Public Works members, we thank you for the City Council's steadfast leadership, and Mayor, thank you.
There's somebody who's been in your department for a very long time.
There has been. Mr. Stuart Patterson, who has been, he has been such a tremendous asset to the department in times of need especially. He is retiring this Friday, so we're going to have a little celebration for him on Friday, and we invite everybody to that celebration.
Thank you so much. Let's take a photo together. Want to go this way? All right. Just take a look, too. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during that portion of the meeting. If you're here on business item, new business item 12A, now is not the time to speak, you'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is later called in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor, we've received two speaker cards regarding items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker, Sandra Placencia. Regarding item 7, I.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sandra Placencia. I'm a policy advocate for Leadership Council, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Local Housing Trust Fund. So first of all, thank you for reapplying and having this in place. It's great for the housing crisis that we're in right now. But I do want to speak that maybe we should apply more PSVS funds to this. I know the city has pledged $5 million. I don't think that's enough. I think we should pledge more money. This is for affordable housing. I know the city in the past has focused more on moderate and higher market rate housing. I do believe we should pay attention to more affordable housing. A lot of folks who are low-income, they can't afford houses. So, you know, applying to the PSVS funds, applying more PSVS funds to match the trust fund would be great. I also am standing on behalf to say that maybe we should have an oversight committee and some transparency. I don't know how much is in the fund. I don't know where that money goes. If the city could please make that more transparent. If it is out there, I couldn't find it. So maybe make it a little easier for residents to find this. And then, an oversight committee that is made primarily, sorry, of CBOs and residents and tenants. And this oversight committee would stand for introducing transparency for the fund, as well as making projects like first-time homebuyer programs, emergency repairs and weatherization programs, and housing rehabilitation programs that my organization has listed in the past. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nick Hill, regarding item 7, J.
Welcome, Stowe.
Good afternoon. The Honorable Mayor Go, City Council members, my name is Nick Hill with the Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak on the virtues of the park ranger. As we understand that there's been a snag in park rangers and that it's going to be taken away, and I'm here in support of that, because first, I want to talk about the presence of the park rangers in the disadvantaged and underserved areas. As you know, in these parks, these parks deserve to have a safe environment, and if you've got the park rangers there, number one, they're there to assist the Bakersfield PD, number one. They're going to be unarmed, but you know, like I said, it's going to be a marriage made in heaven, because you've got public safety that, you know, that we'll be looking at. You're looking at the maintenance of the property that you have to repair every month because of vandalism and everything else like that. And I think that, you know, you've already allocated funds through Measure N, you know, and it was approved before. So I don't know exactly what happened or who made the decision to scrub the program. But this program is vital to public safety. It's also, we're also looking at crisis management here, because if you've got the park rangers out there, and they're at all these different parks and facilities and things like that, it's an automatic deterrent for trouble, you know, and you're talking about increasing the use of the parks, you know, through the families, through picnics, and everything else like that. And the problem, the main problem, the travesty here, is that the decision was made to scrub this park program without even considering to talk to the park director, Mr. Anthony. And I think that that's something that you should reconsider, because even if you do make the decision, let's give him the point, to actually make his point, to make sure that his virtues and his findings are completed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk. Councilmember Freeman.
I know I've been away for a while, but, Mr. Clay, did we cancel the park ranger program? That we're not going to have one now?
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, and Mayor and Council. We did not, and I appreciate our community members coming to advocate for those things that they're interested in. But to clarify some potential confusion, the program has not been scrubbed. There was a Civil Service Commission action last night that we can speak to that item as it comes up on the consent agenda, where the Civil Service Commission did not make a recommendation to move forward on the job descriptions as proposed, but that is still before City Council tonight, as the Civil Service Commission serves in an advisory capacity. And so, the job descriptions and salary range are up for the City Council consideration tonight.
Okay, so it's not scrubbed, and even, I even read that one member didn't show up for the commission to vote, so we didn't even have, did we not even have a quorum?
There was a quorum, but it resulted in four members, and so there was a two-to-two vote, and because it did not receive a majority vote, it did not move forward.
Okay, so it was more of an administrative scope law, whatever, but that was an advisory committee. We had a committee, I think, that met extensively to hammer out salaries, procedures. I mean, I started off wanting them to be sworn officers, and I think in the end that there was, the majority of the committee felt that wasn't the best idea. But they'll be just below that, and they will be able to handle tense, difficult situations, but if it looks like it's going to get really violent, or a person needs to be arrested, they're calling for backup. That's what I heard, so I'm glad to, I think it's important we clarify that, because this gentleman had bad information. So tonight, we'll be voting on that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, did anybody request to speak on new business item 12A? I realized, as I was reading my script, that there's an error in it. This would be the time to speak, if anybody requested to speak.
Mayor Go, I have not received any speaker cards for item 12.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker requests for items listed on the agenda?
No, Mayor Go, we do not.
Thank you. And so now, for items not listed on the agenda.
We have received four speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first speaker is Sheri with the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 26.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and council members. We are with the American Legion Auxiliary, and I apologize, I didn't know that I was a speaker. I just found out. So I apologize. May is Poppy Month, and for those of you who do not know, I brought our poppy story, and it begins in World War I, when there were so many lives lost in battle. And then, the poppies flourished after the battle. And the American Legion in 1920 made the poppy their official flower, and it is to memorialize the lives that have been sacrificed during war. So we are bringing you each a poppy lapel pin. The poppy day is May 27th, the last Friday of May. So we would like to give those to you along with the poppy story. And I have here Brenda Preston and Deanne Graham. Deanne Graham is the state president for the American Legion Auxiliary, and I am the president for the Bakersfield Chapter, Bakersfield Unit, I apologize, Bakersfield Unit 26.
Thank you so much, Sheri. We so appreciate all of your work as the auxiliary members. I know you're always out there at veterans' events, and we see you so frequently. Thank you. We love our veterans in Kern County and Bakersfield, so thank you very much. So you can just give those, Brenda, you can just give those to the city clerk right there, and we'll get those out, but thank you so much. Appreciate your being here. She'll get them to everybody if you just leave her. Thank you so much. Now, Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Natalie Munoz.
Hello.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Natalie Munoz, and good evening to you, Mayor, as well as all the council members. Thank you for having me, and thank you for listening to my voice. I'm here to speak about the proposed park that is on acres just south of Sierra Madre. The main street is acres just south of McKee. It's approximately 11 acres. That was, when I purchased the home, and it was more than five years ago, there was really nothing around, and they advised us that it was going to be a proposed park. It's already, you know, set in stone that it was going to be a park, but still, to this day, we've been put on the back burner for, you know, six-plus years. We've had some issues, and I have to definitely give my hats off to Mr. Parlier. He's been such a great advocate for our community. He's always there to listen to what we're, you know, our voices, and he's done so much already for our community. already for our community. So on behalf of Copper Creek, which is the community right behind the park and the surrounding communities, which is the Stone Creek Area Park, I'm speaking on behalf of all the neighbors. I do have, um, over a hundred petitions or signatures, um, for the park, um, to get built first, um, and I probably can definitely get more. Um, we've all paid our park fees to have this done. Um, the main concern of it is that we had a, a major incident that we had ATV riders riding on the dirt paths. The mounds were above more than 20 feet and they were constantly riding. There's a history on the logbook on the police, Bakersfield Police Department that there's been numerous amounts of calls every single day. Um, so I'm sure they're sick of us, but Mr. Parlier actually put a fence around it which subsided a tremendous amount of dust. And of course, as you know, here in Bakersfield, we have a issue with air pollution and all the dust. So, um, he was kind enough to gather and was able to put the, um, sinus beeping, the, the, the fence, but I wanted to see what progression, where we're going with that because it really needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. You hit it right on.
I know. I was looking at it, it was blinking.
Very good. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Natalie. Really appreciate you coming tonight. So I want to ask staff, um, and I'm going to give a little history on that first. So under the old Wreckin' Parks Director, going back maybe five, six years ago, I said, when is this park coming in? And I said, uh, two years, no more than four years. And here we are, five, six years later, and the, those residents have now, I would say, almost a hundred percent probably built out in that area. They've all contributed their park development fees for, uh, for that amenity for the neighborhood. Uh, I think in a perfect world, it probably should have run in concurrent with those as that neighborhood was coming up, but I'd really like a staff plan on when we're going to be able to finally put that park in. And also I understand there's quite a bit of weeds that have grown up inside that fenced area, and with Fourth of July coming on, there's a potential for a fire hazard, so if we could address that too, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Next speaker, please.
Michelle Harp.
The mask made me run into it. My husband's, uh, immunocompromised, so I'm still wearing a mask. Anyway, there's nothing better. Oh, Mayor Go, I'm sorry, and council members, thank you for having me. Uh, there's nothing better than fresh eggs from your backyard coop. Many cities in California have no agriculture, but they allow backyard hen. We are and have always been, uh, an agricultural community. Even CSUB has built a chicken coop right in the middle of Ward Five. I have a victory garden of my own and would love to add hens so I can have fresh eggs along with my fresh veggies and fruit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harp. Next speaker, please.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Yvette Ward. I live at 2200 Roosevelt. Um, where I live, where the 99 freeway merges into the 58 East, I sit just right above that. On this side of my fence, I, well, I have a brick wall that's running, there is a, um, indoor swap meet, and then I have a restaurant behind me. Why I'm here today is because, uh, we've moved in there in the 1980s. I've been residing there for the last 16 years. The dynamics of this area has changed. Foot traffic is out of control. I am an ICU tech at Kern Medical Center, so when I leave from work on several occasions, I found homeless people that are, that has literally moved into my yard. Right in front of my front yard, there's a driveway. Right on the other side of my driveway is a chain link fence that belongs to the state. At the end of the driveway is also a chain link, uh, fence that belongs to the state. On the south side of the freeway where they've been, um, where they've been working on the freeway, I have a brick wall that stands up that's, which is good because it deals with the noise from the freeway. But on this side, just east of my yard, there is no brick wall, and on the west side of my, of my yard, there's no brick wall. So what is happening is, is all of the noise that is coming from that side is coming into my house. I've lost pictures off the wall. I've seen new cracks in my, in the foundation of my house. I have had to replace flat screen TVs because we're turning it up so loud so that we can hear. I've lost sleep, and I'm also dealing with foot traffic. I don't know what the agenda is as far as what's going on in that particular area, but my hands are tied. I can't do anything with the state fence. I can't touch it, right? So I don't know what to do. So I'm here to ask, what is the plan? Do I continue to live with this excessively loud noise or are, are we looking for something to happen?
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Ward, for your comments. Um, you actually live in Ward Two, in my Ward, and so I'd be more than happy to follow up with you after this meeting. Yeah, you can call me. That's, that's absolutely great. But I will ask also if, Mr. Clegg, if you would reach out as well. Um, you know, I think there's immediate concerns related to encampments in, in that particular block. Um, this isn't the first time I've heard about, uh, those complaints, uh, in, in this particular area and neighborhood. And then also I think there is a question about, um, you know, the appropriateness of a, of some sort of a block wall, um, that separates, um, the, uh, right away for, uh, Highway 58 and the neighborhood. And I know that there are certain warrants related to sound walls, but I'd like to ask staff to do some analysis on that, if you will, and to work with, um, Caltrans to see what we might be able to do to make some improvements to that neighborhood in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7AC for approval. We have received a staff memorandum for item 7AA, transmitting the annual audit and financial reports, with the exception of report item eight, the single audit report, which is still not completed and will be submitted separately. An update, uh, in addition, we received a, uh, staff memorandum regarding item seven J, providing an update to the background section of the administrative report to reflect that the park ranger one and two and park ranger supervisor job specifications did not obtain the necessary votes to be approved. There was not a full panel at the May 17th, 2022 regular meeting of the Civil Service Board for miscellaneous departments with one commissioner absent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I received, um, consent calendar, uh, items for separate consideration from Councilmember Gray, seven J, number four, and seven Q. And I would like to pull items seven H and seven AB. And with that, I recommend adoption of items seven A through seven AC with the noted exceptions.
Thank you for the motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now we'll take seven H. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have noticed on the list of projects that are to be completed under SB One, um, pavement rehabilitation, Manor Street from Columbus Street to Kern River Bridge. And I'm wondering if there can be some, um, pavement rehabilitation piggybacked onto that as you're driving west on Panorama Drive. If you want to go to Manor, there is, um, an exit that's a very steep and sharp exit that goes down to Manor Drive. It is notoriously been, uh, poor pavement and a poor ride, if you want to know the truth. And I'm hoping that maybe some way we can find some funds to piggyback that off of this since it's right in this exact area.
You, Councilmember, will take a look at that. Uh, it may be from a different funding source, but we'll take a look.
Thank you very much. With that, I move approval of seven H.
If you have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you. And now seven J four, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Um, I want to talk about this park ranger program, not in a complete negative light, so I'm, I just want to start with that. But I do have some concerns, and I do recognize, first of all, that there's a lot of interest in the community for the park ranger program. So I'm watching that, I'm, I'm hearing, but I do feel that the public and our taxpayers need to be properly informed, um, on some of the different things about this park ranger program. One thing I kind of heard in our speaker earlier tonight that we need these park rangers at our parks. And I don't want the public to feel that the park rangers are going to be in our parks 24/7, and there's going to be a ranger assigned to each park because that's not the way this will work. The, the rangers will be moving from park to park and moving around and, and checking on things, but they will not be assigned to a particular park. The other thing that I, I do believe the salaries and the compensations should be reconsidered. I did, uh, some homework myself, um, to find out what a step one park ranger, so I'm comparing apples to apples, and a step one police officer, um, would be making in comparison. And as far as, um, you know, annual dollars, um, a police officer would be starting out at $63,360. A park ranger would be starting out at $57,512. There's only less than a $6,000 difference, $500 a month between the two positions. The other thing is, as far as qualifications go and training, rather, a police officer must attend a six-month academy, which is a total of a hundred, a thousand and forty hours. And then following the academy, they're on probation for a year, and then they're still in that one year, they're still under the training of other officers out in the field. A step one park ranger, their training consists of 64 hours of arrest and firearms. There's a huge discrepancy between 64 hours and a thousand and forty hours, and I feel that the, um, compensation between the two, uh, is not equitable, to be honest with you. Um, when a park ranger two gets to their highest level and a policeman gets to their highest level as far as being still a patrolling officer, there's only a difference of $300. So for those that are being more trained, carrying a firearm, going out into the streets where it's a, a lot more dangerous than, than checking on parks and doing the things that the park rangers will be doing, I just think this is something that needs to be reconsidered, and it might be part of the, the, why it was voted down the other night. Also, to date, as of today, um, we have not fully committed to what the tools, uh, the rangers are going to have in their tool belt. So far, we're committed to a mace, a baton, and a citation book. There are, there is no other weaponry that is promised. There is some talk about a taser, but still to date, we have not committed to what tools these park rangers are going to have, and they certainly will not be carrying a weapon. So with that, if this vote passes tonight as it stands, as part of the consent calendar, we will be committing to 18 rangers, nine new trucks. That will be an ongoing cost to the taxpayers of $2.4 million a year. This kind of financial commitment, along with the retirement benefits, et cetera, that are forever into the future, is huge. Without us knowing, if this program will be as effective as Recreation and Parks believes that it will be and that they're hoping for. And to be honest, I would be hoping for that, too. But our economy is beginning to well. Uh, inflation is out of control. Gas prices are through the roof. Um, and families in Kern County are, are being sorely affected by what's happening with inflation. So I believe, uh, we were going into this budget season, going to be voting on it in a month. Um, I believe that we need to consider the times that we're living in right now and not be just throwing ourselves headlong into a program that is not proven, not in our area. And once we can, uh, prove that program out, then we can always add to it. So for the record, I, I'll reiterate for myself, I'm, I'm opposed to the program as it presently stands. Um, and I'd like to see some adjustments that would make this more reasonable. So I would like to make a motion tonight with that, that this program formally be phased in to this budget by capping the exposure to six rangers and three trucks to serve the most at-risk parks for this budget year until we can properly vet the program's effectiveness and then revisit it next year for an increase of positions. So that is my motion tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Clegg, can you just, for the benefit of the public, capture for us all, what really is the item before us tonight?
Councilmember Gonzalez, the item before the council tonight is to adopt the job description and to adopt the salary range. I would note, however, for council, that as it's been discussed at committee and committee recommended to this item come back to the council, um, that, uh, staff is anticipating with the job description and salary range in place that we move forward with the program. But the item tonight is the job description and the salary range.
Okay. And in terms of the budget allocation, that decision has already been made by the council?
Councilmember Gonzalez, uh, at mid-year, council did appropriate the full-time equivalent positions and the budgeted dollars. I would reflect, I think, in fairness and transparency, it was recommended to go to committee for further consideration at that time. And that has taken place. It was, um, discussed and vetted out through the committee, um, and again, recommended to come back to council as, um, recommended by staff. Um, but from, from a straight, just dollars available in the budget, it was included in, um, mid-year for this current year. Uh, again, I think in transparency, the, um, positions for, uh, next year are, of course, you know, subject to the upcoming budget adoption, um, for next year, but those positions were included at mid-year for the current fiscal year.
And just to underscore, this went to the Safe Neighborhoods Committee, where we vetted out various different roles, responsibilities. Councilmember, uh, Parlier and Councilmember Arias and myself were both part of that committee.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, the Civil Service Commission, it was a two-two vote, and so it lacked a majority vote. It was not, it was not declined or it was not voted down. It just, it was a tie and therefore did not move forward or was approved for the lack of a majority vote. Is that right?
I, I think that's a, a fair characterization, yes.
Yeah. Uh, my opinion is that, you know, we've, we've talked about this for many months. Uh, we've heard from the community, the, the dire need, uh, to develop a presence for our parks, these, uh, community assets that we've developed, uh, over the years and that are frankly being destroyed. And we continue that we've developed over the years, and that are frankly being destroyed. And we continue to improve these assets, and I think that's an important thing. That's something that we promised our community that we would do through the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative, and it's important for us to do the best we can to protect our parks and the people who enjoy them. And I don't think that we can wait much longer. I continue to get, on a personal level, continue to get complaints from constituents throughout Ward 2 regarding some of the dire issues in all of our parks. And we need a presence. We need a presence. We need a Park Ranger program, and we need to try it out. And we don't, you know, we can continue to approve upon this program as the years progress and modify it. I'm certainly open to that and reevaluate how we have structured this. I think that's important, and I think that's smart to do, but I don't think that we ought to scale down or to deviate at this point. And so my motion is to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I wasn't at the committee to hear all of the debate and the defense of the salary levels, but I, too, have concerns about the salary level. It seems too high to me without my having more understanding. You know, if I had, if I'd been exposed to more of the defense for it, I might feel differently, but the gap between starting police and Park Ranger of 6,000 doesn't feel right to me. I'm totally in favor of the program. I'm in favor of the 18. I think you have, I just don't, I don't think we'll get any effect at all out of a smaller four. So I'm in favor of everything here, but I'm not comfortable with the salary range. I can support approving everything but the salary range, and if that, you know, were to come back to us after it's been rethought, and is there, is there any way to adjust it? It seemed reasonable, like, I could probably support it then. I can't support it tonight without knowing more. I'm just wondering, could there be, you know, a level 1, 2, and 3 of Park Ranger, and number 1, with a lot less experience in other jobs in life and skills, starts at 42, when the most, someone who comes in and they've had fabulous experience, and they might be starting at 57, but like I said, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the range presented tonight to support that, even though I can support the rest of the program. So I hate to have all these different motions. Make it, what, Mr. Clegg, you can respond to me before I even, you know, do I even propose another motion, or what?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Happy to provide some context on the salaries. And Christie Tenter, our Human Resources Director, is here with us tonight. Again, I'll invite Christie to come and provide a little more context as well, but I'll give my high-level perspective on it. As we looked at this, we looked at probably close to 20 different cities and what they benchmark their salaries at for Park Rangers. We also looked at internal equity. We did look at the equity with police officers. We also looked at code enforcement. We're asking the Park Rangers to have the same citation authority that we have for our code enforcement officers, and so we marked this position against the same salary range as our code enforcement officers. And so it may, based on the feedback I'm hearing tonight, it may surprise council to know that our starting code enforcement officers are at the salary range you see here today. And so we would have some internal equity challenges in addition with our nearly 30 code enforcement officers that are on the job today if we took this same approach, you know, with this internal equity consideration. And so
With our own?
Our own code enforcement officers are at this same salary range that we're proposing today. They do issue citations, I would say, on a broad range of municipal code sections, and I think our Park Rangers can have the same authority but are likely to issue citations on a set of code sections that are more related to our parks and to public access, you know, like the homeless encampments. But that's how we benchmarked this for internal equity, is the same as our code enforcement officers, as well as doing a lot of homework on benchmarks with our external comparisons to other cities. But would invite Christie, if there's other factors to add, if you choose to do so.
Okay.
When we discuss, when a new position is created, a new classification, HR starts off by just obtaining general data. What are the primary duties? We start off with kind of a question-and-answer seeking. What are the duties? What do you think someone needs to be able to perform these duties? Do they, you know, education, training, et cetera. So we just go through a very standard process of obtaining information. From there, our staff in Human Resources begins to then create the actual job description, propose it back, looking at our templates and our standard language, and we build out the job description. We give that back to the department and say, does this, does this kind of meet what you were looking for? And obviously, in this scenario, there were policy determinations from a council and from city manager's office, but we started formulating that job description. Once we have a working draft of that job description and need to then equate to salary, we use internal and external factors. So one, we look at, are there like positions? Not by title, we don't have Park Rangers, but by core duties, essential functions, knowledge, skills, and abilities. Are there other like positions that we say, this works and maintains an equitable relationship internally within our organization? So we benchmark externally, and so Park Rangers were quite a challenge for Human Resources staff to identify in the market for a few reasons. There's a lot of ways to define a Park Ranger role, as we have discussed, as each of you have brought up in a different capacity. There's sworn, there's more security guard, there's the naturalist and the program advocate that justifies quite a higher salary in the market in California today. But we start to look at, where are there like? And as Mr. Clegg indicated, we identified probably over, close to 30 agencies where they had some type of Park Ranger program, whether they called it a Park Ranger or Park Services officiant, or whatever they may title it. But we started to look at, who's sworn? Very few were sworn. I think we had a total of four that came back as sworn. But those, we were only able to identify a few that had the citation capacity. So again, when we look at apples to apples, that citation warranted a higher salary in the market. So when we talk about that authority, and if that is the goal of our program, to empower these individuals with citation authority, then we believe the salary presented matches an external market factor by those that are performing like work, not just called a Park Ranger, but doing like duties and having citation authority, or those that are external, or internal, I apologize. Internal, it's code enforcement. So we have a code enforcement officer, 1 and 2, and a supervisory, we actually have an assistant code enforcement, more training at this time. But we leveled it with that because the market justified a similar range for that. And then we looked at the duties and said, you'll have this scope of work, parks, you'll have to have specialized knowledge of those programs and code that goes around with park duties, and then you have citation, arrest, so to speak, authorities, not detainment, but citation authority. And that is the overall reason why we recommended and had consensus with the department on allocating. So we do have a 1, which will be that entry-level learning, training. It's very comparable to some of the salary grades of those at the county. We believe we'll have a strong outpouring. We've received feedback that correction officers often have a lot of good training. They are not post-certified police officers, but they are often good candidates to transition into these positions. So we believe we'll have a good applicant pool from that in this salary range. But we believe that it provides internal equity for those doing like jobs that are already placed within the system. With that, I'll close. If there's any questions or additional needs on that topic.
Thank you, Ms. Tenter.
Thank you. That did help. So the, I don't have it from you, so the beginning, maybe you can help me, maybe didn't read it carefully, but the beginning salary, the beginning salary is 57, or has everybody started 57.5, or is, based on experience, do they start at different levels?
We do, Councilmember Freeman, we do have a salary range. There is a range associated to each position of five steps. We do have some discretion based on experience and skillset that we can place them in the grades. So that is the starting pay, but it could be higher if someone is a very qualified candidate.
Okay, so the start is, you gave, the starting pay, level 1, for example, is 57.512?
That sounds about right, without my calculator handy. Yes.
I'm just trying to understand, you know, the facts here.
I will take Councilmember Gray's math, yes.
Okay. Well, I'd still like to hear from other council members, if possible, before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you, Ms. Tenter. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this has been out in the public for a while, I've received any number of calls on this particular item, and I would say 30, maybe 40, which is a lot. And when they do call, and I just ask them to tell me what their expectations are, what will be going on, and what will change, and we talk about it a little bit, their perceptions are much greater than this position. They're highly, highly above what we are promising them. This is like Measure N, you know, homeless is going to go away. Well, it doesn't happen that quickly. It's not going to happen like that. And this not, it's not going to happen like that with this Park Ranger program. I don't think we've communicated that well enough. I think we're going to have a lot of disappointed constituents, and so I don't want that to happen. So maybe there is something that we can do beforehand, try to educate our public, because, you know, it's bad enough with some of the feelings and the comments I get from Measure N monies. I don't think we need to pile on to that. So I don't think we're ready to roll it out yet, and I would not be in favor of that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, have received a lot of feedback from the community, and the community wants something to happen, and I think doing nothing is not what the community wants. I understand overpromise, underdeliver, but I also understand that doing something is better than nothing, and we have a problem, and we need to address it. And I think this is an excellent start in how to address it. The committee looked at a lot of different issues. Staff, obviously, has done good research to come up with the position and the salary range. So I am in favor of Mr. Councilmember Gonzalez's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So a lot of the comments that Councilmember Gray brought up when this first came to council, or rewind the tape, it sounds a lot like me. I did have a problem with the salary of the Park Rangers, as they were, you know, laid forth in committee. We spent a lot of time on it. I don't know how many hours we spent in committee, but it was a while, talking about the different things, including salaries. But I just want to go through a couple of things, and maybe you can answer for me, Christian, as we go forward. In committee, we talked about training, FTO program, field training, span of control, meaning the supervisory level compared to what was initially recommended, compared to what I thought was needed, geo-fencing for the Rangers, ensure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, along with the supervision, tasers and employing those, potential sworn status at some point. And another thing, and I'm still kind of miffed by it, is the police department, Greg Terry said he was, if I quote him right, highly in favor of this program, but I still don't necessarily understand why. You just wouldn't want this within your organization as a unit just to do that. But let's just start with those that I gave you, Christian. Can you just touch on those?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Those are all things that were addressed at committee. And in my update to the city council on this topic on April 29, following that committee meeting, I did reflect that much of the good feedback and conversation at committee were really operational aspects, you know, good suggestions about how we could improve some of those operational aspects. I would say the body-worn camera, tasers, and, you know, of course, the action tonight are our policy considerations for council. But we did get some good feedback related to span of control and making sure that we have good supervision. The Ranger 2s, the Ranger 3 offer good options there, but we are taking a look as staff at how we make sure there's the right span of control and level of supervision that the Ranger program needs. We also received feedback, and in that vein, you didn't mention this, Councilmember, but I recall from the committee, looking at our patrol times and the times that the Rangers are deployed, and looking at our ability to not only go from our 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, but also having some capacity through those nighttime hours where vandalism can occur as well. We looked at identifying specific patrol zones so that we could clearly communicate to the public how many parks are being patrolled and how often, so that there's that clarity for the community, as well as for us operationally, just to have a clear plan and program for how patrol would carry out. So those are all things discussed in committee. The geo-fencing as well, to provide some more context to that, it's like some of our private security firms, that you have to go and scan a code at certain locations, and that clearly demonstrates that the rounds are being made appropriately and ensuring that the Rangers are moving and hitting lots of different spots, as well as supervisors getting notices if someone's not moving for periods of time, or if folks are outside of their patrol area that they should be in. Those are good operational aspects to include in how we make sure we manage the Park Rangers. Kind of going off memory, have I missed any council member from your list?
Doing good. Let's talk about FTO program a little bit.
Oh, thank you, yes. So training was a big conversation at committee as well. I think the committee recommended a few aspects that we could do additional training on, and staff is supportive of that, were interested in that. In addition to what was proposed at mid-year, Mr. Anthony has also proposed an additional training related to working with individuals with mental health challenges. We know that many of the individuals that they may be interacting with have some behavioral health challenges, and so doing some additional training on that, as well as beefing up our field training officer program based on the feedback from committee.
What about patrol zones? We talked about that a little bit, too.
Yeah, the patrol zones is identifying specific zones that Rangers will be working within, again, to note which parks they'll be covering, and so that's transparent to the public, as well as for us to, again, have a good operational plan of which parks are going to be covered, and having those zones cover broadly the city areas. We, I think there is still recognition that there are some areas of greater need, but making sure that all parks have some capacity to have patrol coming through them, through those patrol zones.
Okay. Councilmember Gray brought up the training, too, and I do think it is light. Can you just expand upon that a little bit, as far as formal and informal training?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. I might actually ask Rick Anthony to speak to the training aspect. He'll probably hit some points I may forget.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Rick Anthony, Director of Wreckin' Parks. Great question regarding the training. It is not, however, 64 hours. It's actually proposed to be It's actually proposed to be three to four weeks of training, which is a significant increase of what the current training is for code. So you will have critical incident training, which as of right now, I believe the police are utilizing. We will have the arresting powers training, which is 40 hours. You will have the baton training, which is another 40 hours. And then we also propose immersion trainings, not only with flood ministries, but also with the shelter, so that our Rangers can understand truly the resources that are available. And we felt like that training was a best fit for Bakersfield, especially in regard to all of the other efforts that we're putting at getting at some of these issues. And, Councilmember Parlie, I just also wanna thank you for coming to the table and providing some positive feedback, and we, that's the beauty of the program. It can be flexible. We can continue to add layers of training as needed, and we can continue to build the program to make sure it is a successful model. By the way, it is proven successful model across the nation. Reason why so many large agencies have their own enforcement arm. It is essential in order to protect the assets and the investments that we're putting in.
Thanks, Rick. So, when this was referred to committee, I, I was not necessarily proponent of this, this position or this function of the Rangers. I felt the committee did a good job, staff did too, in, in vetting a lot of these questions. We had a lot of members of the public, too. I've heard from quite a few members of the public, including my own constituents, on it. I voted in favor of it coming out of the committee. I still think it needs some legs to it, this program, and, and I expressed some frustration even earlier before we came in tonight, Christian, that any time you manufacture a car, and you start with the wheels on a car, and the body, the frame, and you move it down the, the conveyor belt, and I think that's the way we need to do things, too. I, I think it kind of came backwards, and we started at the, the, the end of the line instead of the beginning of the line, and this probably should've been in committee, and, and maybe workshopped the council ahead of time, just so we could've vetted these issues instead of, again, making sausage from the dais. I think it would've been a much cleaner process. I, I do still have concerns with the Rangers potentially, you know, getting hurt without the proper tools. Can you expound upon tasers, at least having that available tool, and is that gonna be a tool in our toolbox?
I, I believe that we have some models already out there that has shown some evolution of programs. Santa Maria is one of the best cases. Their program started exactly like we're proposing, and began to evolve. I think the important thing here is that we have to have the support of the police, and we don't wanna roll out a model that doesn't have their 100% support. Santa Maria was able to gain traction and working relationship with their police, and eventually it began to evolve to where they were supported to have tasers, they were supported to actually get the peace officer designation. So that's just another great example of how we can build this program and ensure that it's successful. I'm a proponent of tasers, but I certainly respect the, the model that we have in code right now, and that we can certainly have more discussion. We already committed that we will present updates to the committee, at any chance that we are, you know, becking for that. So I think there's just a great opportunity, and, and we should take advantage of it.
Well, I happen to know the police's boss here, so let me ask them real quick. Christian, tasers, can we make some sort of agreement tonight that that could be a tool in our toolbox, or will be a tool in our toolbox?
Councilmember, coming out of committee, just to, to reflect for the, the full council, we did make a commitment to research tasers and body worn cameras for both code enforcement officers and for Park Rangers. I think, you know, given some of the impetus and, and concerns over their safety and their ability to do their jobs, I'm comfortable, you know, saying tonight that I, I am supportive of us moving in that direction. You know, I'm the city attorney to my right, of course, we wanna make sure we vet this through, you know, how training is dictated, how policy is dictated, that we do this right. But I am prepared to commit to that tool being available to our employees.
Now, tasers, if you're talking about tasers and body worn cameras, there'd be additional training, of course, on top of the other training. So instead of three, four weeks, it could be five or six weeks.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, we're open for that as well.
So just putting in context a little bit, when I first went through the police academy, I'm not gonna say what year, but it was a while ago, the requirements for a post certificate, I believe was, I think it was nine, nine weeks when I went through. Not saying we can't train and do good things with, with people, but I, I do think that the complications of law, what people want from public safety, has changed. I do think it's highly important to have some sort of FTO program involved with this. Line supervision is massively important, and how we build that. What kind of update would you have, what's the timeframe on an update, coming back? I know we talked about committee and coming back in six months, but this seems maybe a little bit more important than that, and coming back to the full council if, if it goes forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I think we could do two things, would be my recommendation. One is that, you know, I anticipate that we're not gonna have 18 individuals hired right away. I think it's gonna take us some time to really get folks hired and get ramped up, and so I think we could do a, an interim report on where we at on hiring and training. I don't think we're gonna see Park Rangers deployed in multiple parks, you know, within the first few months. So I think we could come back and provide an update to the council on where we're at on, again, the hiring and the training, and our ramp up, and then come back. I think after we have enough staff fully trained and deployed, it would be, you know, in a three-month timeframe, we could come back and provide some results of how the program is running. That may end up being about at the six-month mark, but we can do a three-month report on where we're at on just to ramp up the process.
So essentially, you're talking about we could be in a phased, whether we like it or not, a phased program?
I think practically speaking, that's what's gonna happen.
Now, let's say that we have the, the "six people," in air quotes, and it just isn't what we thought, or the 12 people, or whatever the number may be. What can we do to pivot if need be?
A couple of thoughts, and then I'll also ask Mr. Anthony if he wants to add more to that. So, I think, inasmuch as, of course, we're creating positions, and we always feel locked in, this council and this administration can remove positions if that's, if it's a program that doesn't work, and, you know, and it's not in our interest. I think that realistically is one option, is to not continue forward with the program. I think we looked at several options of how to move forward with the, the challenge or the problem initially, and we did look at, you know, could we have code officers deployed? Could we have private security deployed? Could we have sworn law enforcement deployed? The reason that we landed in this recommendation, in this spot, is that we don't feel that any of those are ideal in comparison to this one, but, you know, if this doesn't work, could we pivot to a private security model that's the eyes and ears, where law enforcement's responding? And that's an option. I think also, as Rick and I have discussed this, we're not opposed to our Park Rangers having broader authority. I think the challenge is, how do we move timely and quickly to get folks on board? And so if we were to try and hire fully sworn police officers, they would be probably at the, the back of the 30 that we still need to hire. And so, you know, after a year, two years, three years of this program, if we were to evaluate it and say, we're having too many, you know, altercations that are at a heightened level of tension, and we need sworn officers, we could make that pivot. As Rick mentioned, Santa Maria has evolved their program to have increased authority over time. As Councilmember Parlie had made a referral to us, City of Los Angeles did the same with their Park Rangers, and made them sworn officers after a, a number of, of years of having the program, they made that transition. So I think those are all options in our mind as possibilities. This is a way to start timely and quickly and, and see what our results are.
Now, in the 832 laws of arrest and firearms, will firearms be a portion of that training also?
Not at the moment. The laws of arrest will, citation powers, very equivalent to what code currently does.
Well, I think this is a little bit different, and, Christian, again, we had that conversation. If we are looking at potentially, let's say they are gonna be potentially sworn at some point, or if there's a need to make them sworn at some point. If you just have laws of arrest, code enforcement, I'm not gonna rehash what I said before, but I think you're talking apples to oranges a little bit on, on some of the duties, because code enforcement doesn't necessarily do proactive engaging with, you know, a drunk person or a belligerent person. They can always step off and, you know, deal it with another way, or contact the police. But I think the Rangers are gonna be in a little bit different situation. So, most schools that I'm aware of that do the 832 training, they kinda run those packages together, the laws of arrest and firearms. I don't know if we're gonna do it in-house or contract it out, but if we hire somebody and they're a Ranger, and they make probation, and we decide to go sworn, and we find out after the fact, they can't qualify and they can't shoot a gun, because with law enforcement, they can be washed out through the academy process if they don't meet that minimum requirement to become a police officer. They can, you know, they're put out of the academy, or they don't finish probation. So if that is a component of the 832, which isn't that much more, training, but it is significant training, and I think it does teach de-escalation type techniques, too, that are important. But if somebody can't shoot, we find out right then, and they don't make the Park Ranger program. So I, I think that's a potentially important component. Christian, any thoughts on that?
I would, I would ask Mr. Anthony to, to share some thoughts as well, I think, and perhaps even Christie Tenter, because I think if we significantly change the nature of the job duties, we do have the opportunity.
Well, I don't think we're changing the nature of the job duties, we're just changing the nature of the training. You can have, you can have that as a portion of the training, and a lot of places do that, and they never see a gun.
Yeah, I, I think we could opt in, yes. I think we could opt in to more training. What I meant to say by this change in the scope and the scenario of if we shifted to sworn in two years or three years' time, I think we would have an opportunity at that time to determine if folks were qualified at that higher scope and that higher duty. But I do acknowledge that we could opt in to a higher level of training at our choice.
Yes, and, Mayor Go, Councilmember Parlie, I would also echo that should we move to a sworn program at some time, there will be several variables that would have to be met and qualified to successfully pass. So even though you are just, the time of post-working hours, pre-employment screening processes that are at a much higher scrutiny and qualification level for sworn officers. So there could be, in fact, those that did not pass that were operating as Rangers. Our minimum qualifications that we screen for during the probationary period are those within the job specification that relate to essential duties. I would offer that in best practice. We would not have duties that we are asking them to qualify for that they are not currently being asked to utilize. Optional training, or going above in training as a option, is not a bad thing. But again, measuring and using that as a qualifier to say that someone passed the probationary period, I would not automatically advise for. And again, there would have to be a complete rescreening of any applicant to make them sworn. We wouldn't just be able to say, now that the program's sworn, you all are sworn. We would have to vet them, and there would probably be a blending of staff of who actually could move. The county has a blending, they don't have all sworn. They have a small sample of sworn, and a small, and then a sample of non-s sworn. I would say that, that we would have to have a transition program of who would meet sworn and take on those additional duties at that time.
Thanks, Christie. So, before it went into committee, I'm trying to recollect my vote, but I believe I was a hard no on it, but coming out of committee, and I think we did some, some good work in committee, I am now of the opinion that I'll give it, give it a shot, give a tentative approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlie. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say that I appreciate my colleagues tonight for all the questions. I think genuinely, we are all interested in putting together the very best Park Ranger program for the City of Bakersfield. And I mean that sincerely, and I think as much time as we've given it, we could probably give it a couple more hours, you know, of consideration. But I also wanna be respectful of Rick and Christie, and entire team who've put in, you know, dozens of hours, if not hundreds, in putting together this package. So I just wanna thank everybody for, you know, the genuine interest here. Also wanna make a couple points. One, you know, last time we actually approved the allocation, we had over two dozen folks who were here in support, and even more who sent out emails in support of the program. I think I saw several Facebook posts, I had many calls and voicemails and text messages from friends and family and constituents who were very excited and, and genuinely interested and supportive of this program. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that since 2018 and since Measure N passed, we've seen an uptick in violence, right? We took action, we decided that we were going to expand the police force, the police presence. I think we are, you know, close to 80, you know, sworn officers, in addition to what our capacity was back in 2018, which we're really excited about. But the truth is, our response times have not gotten better, right? We are still seeing crime at insane levels on all fronts, both in residential neighborhoods, we've seen it in commercial corridors, we see it at our parks. So something's gotta give, truthfully. And I think that this is an effort, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, you know, this is an effort to say, hey, we need to do something, and we can't just do a little bit of it. We've gotta make a pretty significant investment. I think this is one that we have to be supportive of, and I think is actually going to make a real difference in some of our parks. Look, I live a couple streets down from MLK Park. You know, on a regular basis, probably on a daily basis, there is something problematic that is happening in MLK, and that's the truth of the matter, and I think that this program will be significant in addressing some of those issues that we see there at the park. Christie, if I could ask you a couple questions, I appreciate Councilwoman Gray's comments about the discrepancy between step one, Park Ranger, and step one, police officer. So I wanted to ask, I know that it seems like many moons ago, but we approved a signing bonus for our step one police officers. How mu, how much, can you remind me how much that signing bonus was?
Mayor Go, Councilmember Arias, there are roughly between higher from the academy to the step one, $4,500.
Thank you. And then in addition to that, I know that we've set up longevity pay, and there's a particular structure. I can't imagine that you would have those numbers memorized, but you might, knowing how well you do your job. What is that first bump that they would get? How many years would of service would they have to commit, and what does that bump look like?
Put me on the spot. I appreciate, I appreciate that, though. In total, over a career of someone's with the agency for 25 years, it's upwards of $52,000. As I recall, it's the first tier is at five years at $5,000.
And I know that there's a certain sensitivity about, you know, the class and compensation study that's coming up, but is there a possibility that our step one police officers might be due, due for an adjustment?
In initial research, I would say that we will see below-market data for our police officers.
So just doing some basic math here, in addition to the 6,000 discrepancy in current pay, there's another 4,500 in longevity, or excuse me, in the signing bonus, there's an additional 5,000 in longevity pay, once they reach that first bump, and there's also potential, a possibility for a need for a market adjustment once we get those numbers back. Is that relatively correct?
That is. I would offer, though, that there are additional premiums, and typically, an allotment of overtime that we don't see in other operating departments. So there are potentially shift pay premiums that are different, there are benefit tiers. A sworn officer typically can have a markup of about 54% for total compensation on base due to their retirement program, where a miscellaneous employee, such as we're recommending this evening, is typically around 37. evening, is typically around 37%. So there is definitely a total compensation factor difference between what is being recommended as a Park Ranger this evening and a sworn police officer.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I asked those questions only to point out that for face value, maybe it does look rather close. But once you dig into the weeds, you actually see that there's quite a bit of a difference between those two positions. Is that correct?
That is. There are different benefit programs associated, yes.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that, you know, this is a procedural vote. Let's not hide that fact. This is a procedural vote to basically approve the job qualifications that, you know, staff and council have thoroughly vetted over, you know, the past several months. Two, we've already approved the budget allocation for this program. And three, in safe neighborhoods, we spent about an hour and a half, hour forty-five minutes touching on things like times of operation. We realized that there would actually be two individuals per team. These individuals will not be alone. We talked about which parks were going to be available. We discussed the fact that, you know, maybe there aren't certain parks who are on the priority list, but we should probably have the flexibility to go into those other parks, should there be an issue in other parts of the city. We thoroughly vetted the salaries of these individuals. As I could be corrected, but I think I'm probably the only one who makes less than $60,000 on this council, which points to two problems. One, I probably need a pay adjustment myself. But then also, two, with the cost of, the rising cost and inflation, it's probably not enough, to be quite honest. So there's that. We also talked about equipment, geofencing, patrol zones, triaging response with PD and the rapid response teams. We talked about them walking the beat. Christian, I think, touched a little bit on some of the innovative technology that we can utilize to ensure that these individuals are actually touching base, are, you know, meeting with folks throughout our parks, you know, going to the community centers that are there, and really walking that beat. We talked extensively about training. We talked about the size and the scope of the program. We even talked about the uniform and the color of the uniform. This might be the most vetted program that we currently have in the city of Bakersfield. And I just want to say I'm proud of staff for doing all the work that you've done, and I am proud to support this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gray.
I appreciate all the work also and what I've heard here tonight. And to be honest with you, this is the most I've heard tonight about this program since we've been talking about it. So we went at this the wrong way. We are in a hurry when the mid-year budget, we're trying to get this thing rolled out. That's not the way to vet a program that's going to be costing $2.5 million a year to the city, to the taxpayers. So I appreciate all the work that's been done. Like I said, I've heard more here tonight, so I would respectfully submit that it would have been great after this committee meeting if we would have had a workshop, and then we could have, as a council, talked about this further instead of doing this from the dais. This is not the way to solve public policy. I'm very disappointed in the way we went around this. I am very happy to hear, and I knew about all the bonuses for the police, of course, because I voted on that, voted for it, that they are being compensated more highly, because they should be. They're putting their life on the line every day for us. So I'm very happy with that. But I still do believe that it's a program that we, I'm not for doing nothing. And respectfully to my colleague, Councilmember Smith, I'm not in favor of doing nothing. So I don't want people to leave here tonight and think Councilmember Gray just wants our parks to burn up, and she doesn't want to do anything. That's not what I'm saying here tonight. But I do still feel that we can find out how successful this park program is if we have certain parks, like in Wards One and Two, that need more attention, that we could vet it out, rather than having Park Rangers all. To be honest with you guys, Ward Six, I have not gotten one call that I have had any problems in the park. Now, I'm not saying there isn't, but I haven't received any feedback, zero. Obviously, you guys have received a lot. So I don't want to be villainized here tonight, because I have a different difference of opinion saying that I'm not interested in our parks. I am. It's just the way we've gone about this, and I think it could have been done a lot differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. While I appreciate all of the discussion and information that was passed around tonight, I didn't know enough. Well, I wasn't on the committee, so I kind of agree with Councilmember Gray. I would like to have had more chance to become educated and informed about the program prior to this, because I was kind of caught off guard. And it reminds me of back when I used to be working, and my staff would come in and they needed new positions, and then I would ask my Director of HR to come in. And I had my notion of what people should make. And I always was disabused when the facts were put before me. It always cost, I just couldn't believe, always was more than I thought I should pay. Salaries had gone up again. And we have a very professional HR director, and experienced, a very professional experienced park director, who I have a lot of confidence in, who seems well-versed in this area. And I'm glad we were able to, in my opinion, Rick, get a good, strong hire in here. I'm really happy you're with us. And a lot of times, you kind of have to defer to the expertise of your staff if it's areas that they know a little more than you do. I always thought I knew it all, but then I got disabused of that when they would come in, respectfully. And I have enormous respect for Councilman Parlier being on this committee and advising, because he is the only person with a career in law enforcement on this council. And I do tend to listen, Chris, because I hope you listen to me about development, but I do, I know he knows more than I do, okay? He's a career winner, and he has an expertise, and I really value having that on this council. So I'm a lot more comfortable, now that we've had the discussion, got a lot of questions answered. It'll always cost more than we think. I mean, we'll always pay more than we think. God help us with this inflation. This is a challenge that cities and employers are going to face everywhere. That's going to recap, is already, but it's going to be much worse on our economy. This may seem, a year from now, like a low salary if we have this inflation keep going like this. So I'd also say, I've never had so many calls, ever, on an issue, even homeless, as I have, and they're all, the homeless are complaining about the homelessness and the problem. I've never had so many people calling about how badly they want Park Rangers. I have the Park River Walk right up the street from me, probably the most active park in the city. And I want Park Rangers there. I, of course, originally wanted them sworn. I want them as tough as they can be. I said this before, it's my opinion, we, this is a little rougher population than Westlake Village, where I moved from. And it's a bigger challenge for law enforcement and for Park Rangers. These need to be serious dudes, men and women, who people take seriously. So we're going to have to screen our hires carefully. I'd love it if it came out of law enforcement or security retirees who have some training. We're going to need that. So I think I can support this program. I do feel we have to move forward. And I have, you know, a sort of ready-fire aim. I mean, you always adjust. You've got to get in the game. And whatever your plan was, isn't going to work anyway. You're going to have to constantly adjust when you face reality with everything. So I have faith that Rick's going to adjust as he sees, he's going to bob and weave, and we got to change this, got to change this. And I have faith to the council, if it comes back here. But I think I'm always concerned about the money. But I, I mean, every day I pick up the paper, and somebody else has been shot in this town. This is a really rough place. I have lived in other places. We need strong law enforcement. We're going to need Park Rangers, which, to me, are a form of law enforcement. Because enjoying our parks is just a big part of the quality of life in Bakersfield. And we have some great parks, but the safety issue has now become tantamount, and I'm getting calls all the time. And I will admit, a lot more from women than men who are now afraid to even take a walk in a park, right up the street. They're afraid. And they've been accosted. They've seen horrible things. And so, nothing's perfect, but I have to feel it's time to move forward. It's been pretty well-vetted. So I'll be supportive of, with all of the modifications that were discussed by Christian and Chris, I'm assuming those were all subsumed into, I guess it was Andre's motion. But on that condition, I'm supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Anyone else? Councilmember Gray.
I'm just going to say, I am going to support this program tonight, only because I am trusting that the information that's been given here tonight, that you, that we're going to follow through with that and develop this as we go. But I still go back to my, I think it needs to be a smaller group of trucks and people that we're investing in. But I will support it based on the information that's been given tonight, because I just want to say, this was from behind the administrative report that I dug into, and the training that you all talked about tonight is not in this report, only the PC 832, and that was it. And that's 64 hours. So the information I gave tonight was only information I was given. And as a city council member, we can only make decisions based on the information that we've been given. So with the lack of report from the committee, the lack of the training in this report, and then the salaries, that's how I had to come to my conclusion tonight. But I will support the Park Ranger program.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Anyone else? Seeing none, you have a motion? Councilmember Gonzalez's motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Vice Mayor Weir voting no.
Thank you. And now 7Q, Councilmember Gray.
Well, this is on a much lighter note, and it's going to be real quick. This is for just public information. This is the amendment to add additional dollars to the Mission Community Services Corporation to provide business support services to small businesses and microenterprises. And there are 25, is $2,500 available per business, up to spending the allotted amount, of course. And most small businesses do not understand that the city does have funds available to help them get through the pandemic. And so I just wanted to bring to the public's attention that if you're a small business owner, you know, file an application if you're in need of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. And then would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to file and...
Approve.
And approve. Thank you.
If a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now 7A B. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. 7A B is on a three-year agreement, which looks to extend to five years. Moss Adams coming in and doing auditing of our processes and systems, and that's all well and good. I'd like, maybe, Christian, if you could explain to us what accountability they're going to have and how often they're going to report to the council. Because I don't want to go for five years and have them come back here. It's very important to me, anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Weir. It's a great question. The way we've designed this is that they would have regular interaction with the Budget and Finance Committee, that we would ask them to bring forward a proposed list of highest priority projects that they feel like we need to tackle as a city. But then really, it would be the Budget and Finance Committee to do an initial vetting, and then come back to the city council to adopt an annual work plan. Then every three months, they would do reports to the Audit Committee on the progress they're making towards the outcomes of that work plan for the year. And at least twice a year, be available to come to the city council and give a presentation on those reports. Their practice that they've recommended to us is that when they have a completed report that may have recommendations or findings in it, that they present that formally to committee and council. And so we're prepared to have them do that, like I said, at least twice a year. And if there's more content to do in between those dates, that's a good option as well. And so typically, when you are having a program that, you know, we're not calling it a city auditor program, but it's functioning very much like an audit and performance program, they need to maintain some independence and objectivity. And so we'll work with them very closely as staff, but they will provide their reports directly to the council.
Okay. One more question. So when they are submitting the projects they want to pursue, high-priority projects, and they get direction, and they have a list, they have their work charted out for them, are we also going to ask them to define what is successful?
Yes. I think it will depend a little bit on the nature of the project. But yes, they will identify what is the objective and the scope for each project, and actually scope that out with us as they're starting each project.
Okay. So we would have a beginning of what they expect and the end of what really happened?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve item 7A.
If a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
New business item 12A, council consideration of pending state legislation for SB 1338, establishing the community assistance to recover an impairment court program. A staff memorandum was provided, transmitting a resolution for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick summary, and then we'll defer if there's additional comment by the referring council member. But this item is being proposed to offer additional tools to municipalities to refer individuals with mental health or behavioral health challenges to a process that would provide them some assistance, but then also to go through a vetting to determine if they need to receive services, if they are of sound mind. It is not conservatorship, but it's one step towards, or one step away from conservatorship. So this would provide a new tool for, say, a Flood Ministries, a rapid-response team, or other members of our teams or our partners, to identify an individual who may not be in a position to make good choices for themselves, to be referred to this process where they would have care and protections, but also some requirements to be cared for with their mental health needs, and essentially have some accountability to follow through with the plan that is developed by the care court. And so we see this as an important tool in addressing the mental health crisis that is very connected to homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. California faces a mental health and substance abuse crisis in regards to homelessness. I had the honor of being on a panel for the League of California Cities Summit with Senator Umberg and Mayor Daryl Steinberg, who actually was... Umberg and Mayor Daryl Steinberg, who actually was the creator of MHSA, and I was just surprised. Big city mayors have been in unanimous support of this, but with all of the smaller cities expressing the same need for greater tools for us to help both persons experiencing homelessness and then those impacted by homelessness, our businesses and our residents. And I just want to thank you, Anthony, for all of your support with our legislation there. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to begin by thanking you, Mayor Go, for your leadership on behalf of the people I represent in Ward 2 and the downtown ward certainly have been impacted by the homelessness crisis over the last few years, and your leadership at the state level is very much appreciated. Obviously, there must be more action taken at the state level and in Sacramento to address this crisis. You know, Councilmember Weir mentioned just a moment ago that, you know, many of our constituents throughout the city are frustrated by still this persistent issue related to homelessness, even despite all of our best efforts. I mean, it's not for the lack of trying here. I mean, we have a new emergency shelter that is completely full. You know, critics said that this shelter wouldn't, would be empty and nobody would go. Well, no, people are going. We were able to actually permanently house over 135-plus people from that shelter. We have a number of services from rapid response to clean city teams to, you know, outreach teams that we fund with Flood. There's been a number of things that we've been doing to try to address this issue, but certainly cities cannot do it alone, and we need the state to step up, and we need tools like the Care Court that can get to this subpopulation of people who are living with dire substance abuse issues or mental health issues, who are on the streets and who are dying. And we currently expect them, expect individuals who are out in the street, running in front of traffic, half naked, accosting people at, you know, at a cafe or a restaurant, we're expecting people who are exhibiting irrational behaviors to make rational decisions about their own health and their own care, and it just does not make sense. And so we need an additional tool like the Care Court to help get at those individuals. It's not going to solve the problem. There are so many other facets and components that are required, but at least it gets us a step forward. And so I think the city of Bakersfield ought to register our support for this, and we need to continue to push in our lobbying agenda so that we can get this over the finish line. So with that, I'm going to make a motion tonight to approve this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Any comments? I don't see any requests to speak. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Councilmember Freeman.
Earlier this evening, a lady in Councilman Parlier said he talked about a park that hadn't been built. I don't know which park it is. I'm not sure why if we, because, you know, as a builder, you pay $3,000, whatever, a unit goes. I believe it, I was always told it was in a fund for that park, segregated from everything else, and so it sounds like that money's probably been sitting around a long time. So now it probably is equal to half of what a park costs. There's been so much inflation. I mean, if it's, if they're fully built out, this has been years, and it could easily be that the fund is half of what it takes to build a park. But it raises, so I guess that'll come out of the general fund, whatever, because if we owe these people a park. I would like you to start looking at, I mean, even the builder just asked me the other day, we're going to have any fee increases? And I said, ah, not that I know of. Well, maybe not this round, but we have garbage fee increase, we have water fee increase, inflation's out there. By next year, there might be an increase in inflation for park fees to pay for a park if they're going to keep costing more and more. But given that, I wonder if you could look at, first of all, whether the park fee is adequate now? I don't want to change you, yeah, but you know, is it adequate? And if it's not, rather than just saying, hey, let's just increase it 5%, that's a direct pass-through, every house goes up by another $1,000 or $2,000 bucks out there. All it does is erode our whole efforts for affordable housing. So instead of saying, let's just do it, let's use our creative imagination, and maybe there's a way to design the parks differently. Maybe there's something we can't do in the parks. Maybe we can have our own staff do some of the work, irrigation and stuffs that we don't have to spend as much. Throw a thousand ideas out, but if we, rather than raise everything automatically, which means there's no, housing goes up and up and up and up, maybe we can't have the exact same kind of park anymore because we can't afford it. Maybe there's a way, cut 5%. But, so if you would look at that and perhaps devise a way that we don't have to increase the park fees because we have other strategies to hold it steady, because I think we're going to need to start doing that more and more. Industry has to do it. I can tell you, the private employer, when we had recessions, it was up to us to cut the cost. We couldn't pass it through anymore. And as government, we don't just pass it through. Well, we, there's a point where we're ruining our housing stock by just passing it through with these fees, so we're going to have to use our creativity on everything, including traffic impact fees, everything, our infrastructure. We can't just pass things on anymore. So with regard to park fees, if you put some thought into that, maybe you guys can come up with a way to hold it steady for another year or two.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Mayor Go, Councilmember Freeman, thank you. Yes, as a matter of fact, I've been working with Director Anthony on looking at the park impact fees, of course, and the Public Works Department is charged by code to prepare a report and analyze what the correct impact fee should be for the day. Your suggestion to take a look at different innovative types of parks as part of a maybe potential impact fee adjustment, we can certainly integrate that into the report that Public Works is charged with preparing, and then also look at some value engineering ways to, and creative ways to be innovative with park design.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment about the rapid response team in the riverbed. We approved that in last year's budget, and two weeks ago, they finally got started. And every day I'm on the bike path, and every day I see them filling up large roll-off dumpsters and making real progress on cleaning up the river, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am blessed with two wonderful people, my appointees for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. I want to thank Paul Yanez and specifically Teresa Olson, who works for Keller Williams Realty. I went out and visited them last Saturday, and they were not in my area, in fact, they were in a county area off of Niles, but they were helping a small church out there, a congregation of about 100 people. They have a dilapidated lot in between the church and their soccer field that they have for their kids' program, and they went out there and picked up trash and needles and painted the graffiti on the walls before that soccer park just to ensure that those kids are safe with that church. And it was really, really touching to see them connecting with our community. I think it's a good point that was made tonight. The information comes out of committee, and the rest of the council is just totally unaware of what's happening until maybe we get something in the admin report or something leaks out when you're talking to staff on something. There's a way that maybe we could just have, not boiling everything down, but having a synopsis after a committee meeting, because, you know, each of us are on some committees, but we're not on all committees, just explaining kind of what transpired, just a recap of what happened on those committees.
Yeah, Councilman Parlier, I think it's a great idea. I've provided some brief updates in my weekly emails to council, but I think we could expand on those. And then I do think for topics that are of more substance, providing a memorandum and then, you know, measuring council appetite for workshop. I know it's tough getting everyone together to cover topics, but, you know, clearly on the big ones, some more conversation. So I'll approach it from that standpoint to provide, in my weekly updates, one week, the same week that it occurs, to have an update go out to council, and also determine when it's appropriate to have a memorandum that has a little additional information and then determine where we have workshops.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. May is Bike Month also. We've had a lot of other recognitions, and so I'd just like to thank all of those in Bike Bakersfield, and we have a Board of Director on our council, and I'd like to present this to you in gratitude for all of your efforts and Bike Bakersfield's efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do believe bicycling improves our city, the quality of life of the city, and thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. And then tonight, Bike Bakersfield is doing a rite of silence to remember those who have lost their lives or been injured on the public roadways. So just want to remember that, and then also let you know, colleagues, that I sent on our behalf to the mayors of Buffalo and Laguna Woods our condolences. And so if we can just take a moment of silence to remember the victims and the families that
Thank you. And with that, we're adjourned at 7:17.